Thank you. All right, so we'll call the meeting to order at six oh five. Family take broken, please.
Susan Fast.
Here.
Andy Pearson. Christie Haysman. Belle Ahmet. Katie Keeker. Shannon Sykes.
Here.
Pam Sykes on some calm, here.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, this is essentially a one item board meeting slash hearing. What we're required to do by the state every year is to, is to have this opportunity. But just to kind of back up a hair, it was in two thousand thirteen, actually, when the state passed a World's Best Workforce Act, which was a goal in all that to try to, to have us all in education, see if we can't provide to the state the world's best workforce in our new kids that are going through the schools. And it's, you know, it was a great idea. And so there are aspects of that that then schools are required to make sure that they do. And they have to set certain goals and we have to, every year, we have to, that's what we're doing today. We have to talk about whether we've accomplished those goals, where we are, and trying to accomplish those goals and so forth. Part of that also for certain schools that includes us is A and I, which is the achievement and integration, which is kind of associated with that. The whole idea is if your school has a certain number of, of, in quotes, minority individuals, or even if your, if your district is near another district that is in that situation, then you're obligated to associate yourselves and, and kind of work together to in fact help each other do that achievement and also integration. So what we have done, because we are that school that has most of the, of the Spanish kids that would fit into that, what we do is we work with, for the most part, Comforty. And this year, that's about the only school that we've worked with, but sometimes another school as well. And that don't, that schools that don't have many minorities in their, in their enrollment. And so it works for them, it works for us, and the idea is to kind of integrate both ways. And we do that, for example, not this last summer, but typically in the summers, we have summer school at Comforty. And when we send kids over there for certain kinds of things. COVID has really caused us to not be able to do much of those kind of integration sorts of activities with other school districts. But normally, that would be, we would be doing those sorts of activities every month or so. And, and we will probably do that again, I don't know about this year, but because of COVID coming, coming back maybe. But sooner we will, we will be doing that. But again, back to what, what we have in front of us is, the summary is, it says our combined World's Best Workforce and summary and the Achievement and Integration Progress Report. So essentially, it's this, this year's essentially reporting on this last year's goals and whether or not we achieve those. So that's the first page. And I'll just kind of run through some of these things that don't particularly matter. The annual report, as you see at the top of the second page, is what we're talking about here. This is what I'm presenting to you. Annual public meeting is that we're required to have a public meeting such as this to report to those who might be interested in, in hearing about what we've accomplished and maybe what we are still hoping to accomplish. And we have to post that, that date, and it's, we see about in the middle of the page in bold, it's December the thirteenth, which of course is today. Then we have a district advisory committee that helps this committee. Typically, we do a lot more than what we did, but, but that's part of what that committee is responsible for. You can see the members of that committee and, and all of you were at a meeting just last week. So you, you know that most of these people were able to make it to that, to that meeting. Equitable access on page three. Equitable access to excellent and diverse educators. Another goal that they have is that if you look at what that's bolded in, WBWF, that's World's Best Workforce, obviously, requirement is that required districts and charter schools to have a process in place to ensure that students from low income families, students of color, American Indian students, are not taught at disproportionate rates by inexperienced other field ineffective teachers. Now, for example, in, if you have a larger school, let's say five hundred and more, where you have maybe three second grades and three third grades and so forth, it would be conceivable if people weren't conscientious, I'll just use that word. They could put inexperienced teachers teaching the classes of minority kids as opposed to their best, their best teachers. We don't have to worry about that because we only have one section of every class. So every kid, for example, every third grader, no matter what their background, is in that one class with that one teacher, whether they're effective, not effective, or whatever. That's, that's, that's not an issue with, with us, and I, and I have to address that, and I, and I do it at another point here. So then the next page, page four. I can't explain the, what I, some of what I just mentioned to you, but I have to address that. So Butterfield, I'm saying Butterfield Olden is a small rural K twelve district. We average approximately sixteen students per class with a few exceptions. So there is only one first grade, one second grade, et cetera. All third graders, for example, no matter their background, their cultural origin, their income level, et cetera, have the same skilled teachers and paraprofessionals and other staff. All teachers are trained in cultural competence, and we do that at different times during the year, particularly in the preschool workshops that we have. We use FastBridge assessments for our data gathering. We test three times a year, and teachers review their other data at least twice monthly. Superintendent, pre twelve, pre K twelve principal, K twelve counselor, and title teacher are all involved in reviewing access data, including all of the teachers. So what strategies has the district initiated to improve student equitable access to experienced in field ineffective teachers? Well, when vacancies arise, we place ads in the local newspapers in an attempt to encourage individuals of color, Latinx candidates particularly, to apply for the position, as well as advertising outside our area through ad posts to attract minorities who have the education and the experience to be highly qualified teachers, interventionists, and paraprofessionals at our school. This has worked well for us, and this year we hired three new ethnically diverse teachers, all of whom are qualified and all of whom are bilingual. What goals do you have to reduce and eventually eliminate any equitable access gaps that you might have? While we have no equitable, equitability access gaps as stated above, we continue to have the goal of encouraging ethnically diverse teachers, interventionists, and paraprofessionals that we can attract to our district as also described above. And so they, and they go on to mention about licensed teachers and so forth, and describe your efforts. In that next bullet, describe your efforts to increase the racial and ethnic diversity of teachers in your district. What I responded with is all in our group, particularly Tammy and I, all racial and ethnic student groups present in our district are represented in our licensed teaching staff. We hired three new bilingual teachers of Spanish origin during the two thousand twenty one school year. By far the largest racial slash ethnic group presented in our district student body is Aztec Hispanic Latinx. More than sixty percent of our students are of Spanish origin. We also have several families and students who are of South Asian, Southeast Asian descent, Laos in particular. Butterfield Olden School has approximately twenty, twenty-five percent staff who are, have the same minority ethnicity as our students. And then they ask specifically, how many additional teachers of color and American Indians teachers would you need in order to reflect your student population? As you can imagine, that's, it'd be almost impossible to ever do, but you still have to answer the question. And so my answer was, we would need six more teachers of Latinx background to match our Latinx student population at our school. Then what strategies has the district initiated to increase and retain teachers of color, et cetera? And what goals are you pursuing? So on page five, our goal is to hire as many qualified Hispanic teachers, interventionists, and paraprofessionals into the district as possible. Specifically, our goal is to hire at least one additional bilingual slash Latinx staff member each year as we aim toward ten such staff. We have offered retirement incentives for our longest serving teachers to bring more ethnically diverse teacher opportunities to our school. We, we did offer to three different senior teachers at our school a financial incentive, if I can call it that, to consider retiring a bit early. None of them wanted to do that, but if that's one way for us to be able to get others in, obviously, we can't hire a new, let's just say, fifth grade teacher or whatever grade teacher. If in fact that a person stays in that position, they stay in that position. It's not like we're going to fire someone to hire someone else. So specifically, our goal, as I said, is to hire at least one additional bilingual Latinx staff member each year as we aim toward ten such staff. We advertise by word of mouth in our community and in neighboring communities, which have many Hispanics, of course, as well as through ad posts. And we keep an open dialogue with all minority teachers to assess with any additional resources or tools they may need to do their job well. While we do not have as many Latinx candidates applying as we would hope for, we hire Latinx candidates when available. In the last two years, for example, we have hired four Latinx or bilingual staff, which is outstanding for our small district. And by the way, we don't hire someone just because they're bilingual. I don't want anyone to misunderstand that, that they have to be qualified, of course. And hopefully, they also have that bilingual aspect to them. Local reporting of teacher equitable access to excellent and diverse educator data. I essentially spoke to that already, we, we do as much as we can in that area. So the next page, page six. All students ready for school. Again, as I mentioned the other night, there are five goals, and the first one of them is that all, our job is to make sure that all students are ready for school. So how do you do that? Well, we've got goals to try to accomplish that. Provide the established goal for the two thousand twenty twenty one school year. This was, again, this last school year we're talking about. That's what this whole, whole paper is, is about, is the goals and the results of our goals for last school year. Our data was negatively affected by COVID nineteen. Five of the eight preschool students will meet their FAST A reading benchmark. That was our goal. And then it says provide the result. Our data was negatively affected by COVID. They, they want you to say that every so often so that, because that's okay to say and they understand what happened. And I said that five of eight did meet their FAST A reading benchmark. So check one of the following, in fact, right in the middle, it says goal met. That's our one year goal, and we in fact met that goal. Second, please describe to what extent, if any, the COVID pandemic affected the quality of the data used. And then it gives some examples, and what I did at the bottom there is I said the COVID nineteen pandemic did in fact affect our data. Distance learning was a large factor in the deficit of learning that took place. Still, our children met our goal and would have done better had it not been for COVID. We use FAST for our data collection. It is disaggregated by free and reduced program and non-free and reduced, and by race. They asked that, that question, how do you disaggregate? Students are taught in large groups, then in small groups, or one-on-one, depending on proficiency. Next goal that they have for us and we have to achieve it. All students in third grade are achieving at third grade level literacy. What is our SMART goal? Our goal is that seven of our fourteen third graders will achieve their FAST A reading benchmark. What's the result? The result is that seven of our sixteen, it turned out we got two more students last year, seven of our sixteen, or forty-four percent, met their FAST A reading benchmark. So again, we met our goal because seven of the kiddos did in fact meet their, their benchmarks. And then it just gives you a bit more information that they're asking for, and at the bottom, I, I sent something similar. The COVID nineteen pandemic did in fact affect our data. Distance learning was a large factor in the deficit of learning that took place. Still, our children met our goal and would have done better if it had not been for COVID. We use FAST A reading for our data collection. And again, it's disaggregated by free and reduced, non-free and reduced, and, and by race. Students are taught in large groups, then in small groups, and then one-on-one, depending on proficiency. That's that particular goal. The third one, close the achievement gaps between student groups. What's our goal? The goal is that the achievement gap for two thousand twenty twenty one will be less than or equal to fifteen percent. How do you figure that out? We do assessments. The result in reading was that twenty point three percent of our free and reduced students achieving their A reading goal, achieved their A reading goal, and thirty percent of our non-free and reduced students achieved their A reading goal for a gap of nine point seven percent. And in math, eighteen point five percent of our free and reduced students achieved their math goals, while eighteen point two percent of our non-free and reduced students, students achieved their goal for an almost equal result, meaning there were no statistically relevant gaps in math, but there was in, in reading. So, but not, but not hugely significant. We were, we were close enough that we weren't, it wasn't a problem. So we met all of those, or essentially both of those goals. And again, at the, at the bottom, I added again something a little different. FastBridge math was used for our data collection in math. Teachers first taught in their large groups, then broke into smaller groups, then the one-on-one as necessary. We also had the benefit of a math interventionist who was very helpful. I think you're aware, but Rosine, who is our music teacher for the little guys, for the most part, I had no idea until I found out last year that she actually is a math graduate, taught math, sold math, is really quite a teacher. And, and she said, I've, I've got to help the kids, I've got to help the kids. I said, okay, how should we do that? Let's, let's make a plan. And she's been helping them ever since. One, one really helpful thing she's doing this year, for example, is one of our new math teachers at the high school level is Paul. And he hadn't taught before, but he had a math background. And so she has been really, really helpful with him, helping him understand the classroom, the different approaches to teaching because he hadn't taught, you know, so he didn't know some of those approaches. And if you don't have that, you know, if you don't have those, those teaching experiences before you begin teaching, then it's a little tricky. So that's been very helpful for us as well. Fourth goal, all students are career and college ready by graduation. Okay, what's our SMART goal? Again, this is for last year. We determined that eighty percent or more of our high school students would achieve a two point six GPA or better, which we felt meant that they were college and career ready. Well, what's the result? Eighty-six percent of our high school students achieved at least a two point six GPA. So we, it was, we were trying to meet at least eighty, and we got eighty-six. So again, to the right, you can see that that goal was met. And then they ask you to describe some things. This is pretty much the same that I mentioned earlier, so that's not much different than we've already heard. And then the last of the World's Best Workforce goals is that all students graduate. Provide the SMART goal for the twenty twenty one school year. Now, we, our goal is that at least ninety percent or more of our seniors will graduate from high school. And what's the result? One hundred percent of our seniors graduated from high school. So what's the goal status, it was met? And again, I have some of the same thing, a little different on the bottom here. The COVID nineteen pandemic did in fact affect our data. Distance learning was a large factor in the deficit of learning that took place, but still our students met our goal. We used graduation data, which they asked for, which is disaggregated by, again, free and reduced, and non-free and reduced, and race. All students worked with students, all teachers worked with students in their classrooms, but also use the assistance of our after-school academic support each Tuesday and Thursday, and our in-school academic support of thirty minutes each day, which we just started doing again. And now that's, that's where the World's Best Workforce, part of all of it. We are who we are, and our clientele is who it is. We also. Achievement and integration progress report. Again, it's essentially just a progress report. So let's, let's look at what that's all about. First page, essentially page twelve is just the initial kind of information. With the superintendent and all of that. But then the second is, okay, what is your, what's your first goal? What's the SMART goal statement from your plan implemented for this last school year? We had two that are involved in this particular area. Students enrolled for the full academic year in grades K through two, just those three grades, K one and two, will increase their A reading scores a minimum of fifteen points as measured by the FAST Benchmark A Reading Test from fall testing to spring testing. So just think about that for a second before we get to number two. So what we're talking about is, as we, obviously, if we take the kids in the, in the fall, when they first come to school, and we test them with the same test that we also, or similar tests, that we also test them with at the end of the school year, in the spring, in like May, then we can get an idea of how successful the teaching was during that particular year, this, this last particular school year. And so that's what this is all about. So that's, let's just deal with number one first. So for grades K through two, the A reading tests completed in the fall of two thousand twenty showed the following results. Kindergarten wasn't taken because of COVID. First grade, only three of fifteen met, twenty percent met their, that goal, their own goals. And second grade, it was six of seventeen, or thirty-five percent. Well, then what were the actual results after that, that school year, this last school year? Well, in grade one, kindergarten wasn't tested again because of COVID. Grade one, twelve of fifteen increased their A reading score by fifteen points or more from fall to spring. So eighty percent met that goal as opposed to the twenty percent that we had before, so that was substantial. Grade two, ten of seventeen increased their A reading score by fifteen points or more from fall to spring. So fifty-nine percent met that goal as opposed to the thirty-five percent that had met it at the beginning of the school year. So I think it's fair to say that we had a really successful year last year with how, how well the kids did. Then we asked, as you know, then we followed it up. We had a lot of money that was provided to us for summer school, as I think you, you all know, and we used it. And we had, I've said it before, but I'm so pleased with it, that we had over half of the school in summer school at one point or another. And that also helped because this, as you can see, the kids did well in the school year in this particular situation. But then we didn't want it to drop off, which often it will do in the summer. And so we had six weeks of summer school, three and then a break, and then three more. And that worked, that worked really well. We were able to provide a lot of teachers because we were able to provide the money that we got. that we got from the state to do that and to provide them all sorts of activities and other kinds of things in the classroom and out of the classroom that were fantastic. So that helped us start this year off better than it otherwise would have been. So very proud of the teachers and all that was done this last school year and this last summer. So that goal, number one at the top, is it on track? Yep, that goal was met. So number two. This is our goal. "Students enrolled for the full academic year in grades three through twelve," okay, not K through two. Now we're talking about the rest of the school, the whole school, "will increase their group of proficiency rate in reading as measured by the state reading accountability test, the MCAs and such, from thirty-two-point-seven in 2018 to the recent state average by, in 2023, and of course, in a couple more years, of fifty-nine-point-seven percent." The goal for us for this last year, though, was only forty-four percent. Is that, that's an achievement goal, as you can see in the next column. And then if you go down to number two, they didn't do quite so well. "Students in grades three through twelve achieved that a thirty-two-point-seven percent on the MCAs in reading in 2019." And that was the baseline. That's where they were before. And then our goal was to have them go to forty-four percent. "Students in grades three through twelve achieved that only twenty-eight percent." So they didn't do as well as we had hoped. And for sure, COVID caused us the difficulties in accomplishing that goal. And so that goal was not met. And we're not on track where we want to be. Now, we have to understand that the school hasn't typically been more than twenty or maybe thirty percent proficiency for quite some time. This isn't, this isn't a new thing. It's been going on for quite some time. So my major goal is to change that. And then, of course, COVID hits us, and it kind of messes up everything. So we're gonna continue, we're gonna continue, we're gonna continue to work at that because it's our goal to try to get ourselves at the state average, which is typically in the mid-fifties, if you were to take the state average of all the kids in all the different grades, what their proficiency is. It's usually fifty to fifty-five percent in that range. And so we've got a ways to go. That's why we also have the three, they're called cohorts from the state who come in and help us out. And they do a nice job of working with the teachers, coaching them, because there's always something you can learn from someone who's a really sharp teacher, and those people are, or were. And so that's what we're doing to see if we can improve that. And we will, we will improve it for absolutely sure.
I got a quick question.
Yep, you sure can.
Okay. Do you have, you know, for the kids to catch up on their reading, do you have like a reading program or something installed? Like something to give them incentive to read more?
Not, not per se.
Because like, all right, when my kids were younger, my older ones, for reading so many books, they would get like a certificate to go to like Pizza Hut or something like that to, you know, when they met their goal, they would get this little certificate to go to. Something like that might give them a reason to start reading more and maybe boost up that number.
Now, we've, I think it was about five hundred books a year, a year and a half ago from the county. And we've distributed those out in both Spanish as well as in English. And that's helped a bit. But I don't know, it would be each, each teacher might be doing that or might not be doing that, but I'm not aware of it.
I know they used to do that.
Can I interject?
Yeah, I was just gonna say, you might know.
So it's actually very recent, we've started things called interventions. So we do that every single day. I think it's actually two times a day. It's like five to twenty minutes, and we work on reading. And so we take them at where they're at, and we're trying to get them up to grade level. So students are getting grouped based upon where they're at, and they're working with a teacher that's gonna help them raise their scores. So there is new stuff going on. Within the last week, so, yeah.
Okay.
I was just curious, because, you know, like I said, when my kids were younger, they used to get the little certificate to go to Pizza Hut, pizza and all that. Then they used to do that box store, dollar store, whatever they call it. When they would read, they would get like so many dollars, and then they'd go to get a little toy or something for reading.
I talked to the group about doing something more like that. Those are good ideas. And it's extremely important, because as I mentioned to you before, that's one of the reasons they have that goal of reading at third-grade level by the time you're in third grade, because the research has shown that if you do, you're fine. You're gonna be fine in life. You're gonna be fine in college. I mean, it'll, it'll, everything should work out for you. But if you don't, then there are problems. And that's where you're talking about, Aaron, about the interventions that we would have to boost that up. And we do have a number of those, as well as we have the thirty minutes a day, during the, you know, the in-school interventions every day. For, half an hour is quite a bit of time for teachers to work with kids or for kids to work on homework, depending on their level and so forth. And then we have, as you know, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, we have the afternoon, after-school, two-hour interventions, the academic support, as it's called. And that's fantastic for providing the help for kids as well. So we have a number of those, those programs that are in place. Let's see. Where was I? Just, we finished page thirteen, I think, right? Did I not read that last, I think I didn't read the narrative. Am I correct?
Correct.
That's right. "Before, during, and after-school academic support will be offered individually to any student who needs or wants this support, and it will be arranged through their teacher. It is designed to reduce low grades and increase academic achievement through targeted interventions, makeup work, and general academic assistance, including homework help. Though accessible to all students, our focus will be to underserved populations, especially the free and reduced population and Hispanic students. Transportation to home will be provided two of those days a week to remove as many barriers as possible and allow access to the support after school." And then they ask, "What kind of data did you use and so forth?" That's our first A&amp;I goal. So goal number two. "That all students enrolled at Butterfield Olden School will increase college and career readiness as measured by updates to a personal learning plan. And goal setting, academic achievement, and cultural awareness." And what kind of a goal is that? That's an integration goal. Baseline is that eighty percent will provide a personal learning plan. And as you can see, eighty-five percent, in fact, did provide a personal learning plan, so that goal was met. So what kinds of things are we talking about? With these other two schools, in the past at least, that we have worked with, events such as Youth Frontiers Retreats, CLIME Theater Classes, the Great Big Get Together, and MSU Children's Theater Production in Classroom follow-up are done in partnership with collaborative schools, and they provide an integrated learning environment for all students with potential to impact achievement and prepare students to enter a diverse workforce. All events have both a career/collage-ready and integration component. These events help students not only to increase cultural competency, but assist students in seeing the value of school, career, college, and the opportunities available to them by exposing them to a variety of challenging learning situations. Career and college readiness learning is reinforced by personal reflections in the students' personal learning plans." Then they ask for some information down there at the bottom. And then we have the third and last Achievement and Integration Goal. What is it? "As to hire at least one additional bilingual staff member each year." We talked about that before. It also fits in here. And provide, number two, "Provide mentorship programs for all new teachers. Increase equity through qualifying and training inexperienced teachers and out-of-field teachers. Maintain training for all staff and cultural competence so students' learning needs are met and their perspectives are valued." And what kind of a goal is that? It's a teacher equity goal. And the first one is that Butterfield Olden had one ethnically diverse teacher. That's our, that's not our goal. That's our baseline. And so we hired, the result is, we hired three new ethnically diverse teachers. So that goal was met. And number two. "One hundred percent of staff were offered professional development opportunities that reflected this goal. And the result was that one hundred percent of staff who asked for professional development opportunities were provided them. I said no to no one. Though COVID certainly limited those opportunities, all teachers provided, are also provided coaching opportunities, and I mentioned that a little bit ago. And not only by the cohorts, but also, for example, Tyson Walker has coached with a number of teachers who he thought he could be of assistance to. And so again, that goal was met. So what's the narrative? "Through regularly scheduled professional development, excuse me, professional learning communities, PLCs, as you sometimes hear us say, we will have peer mentoring for new teachers. We will also have one-on-one teacher modeling throughout the mentorship. Administration will provide resources to increase the quality level of any inexperienced or out-of-field teachers. Cultural competency exercises and training will be held during PLCs or workshops, which will include the focus on ACEs awareness to better serve those students, those are students who've had terrible events in their past that have caused them to have difficulties. We also have the experience of our three cohorts from the state who all offer individual teaching." And then I mentioned how the data was collected and so forth. And at the bottom, I said, "Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, we were not able to collaborate with our usual school districts or integrate in person within our own school for many months, and that was just a reality." So almost done. The impacts from online learning. I just, they asked what that was for us. I said, "We were able to modify our strategies through digital learning. We provided Chromebooks to all students, as well as providing Internet through hotspots and purchasing Internet to those who did not have Internet. We provided Chromebooks and our computers to all teaching staff, as well as doc cams and other cameras, allowing teachers to easily see the students with whom they were working. We also provided teachers with whiteboards to assist the teachers in presenting their information to students." We spent a lot of money, again, thank goodness that the state and the federal government came up with these dollars, because we didn't have those before. But we were able to provide, essentially, I think it's fair to say, we provided teachers anything that they reasonably wanted. And they don't ask for unreasonable things. So pretty much anything that a teacher asks for, I can't even think of an exception where I said no. They were given that. So now that's, that's the end of World's Best Workforce. That's the end of A&amp;I. This rest, as it says in yellow, the following is not applicable to our schools, it's for schools that don't have a number of racially diverse populations like we have. So that's where we are. That's the requirement that we have and happy to answer. And you've got a teacher in the room as well, thinking maybe jump in as he did a minute ago, and I appreciate that, if you have any questions about the World's Best Workforce, A&amp;I. Happy to answer that question.
There's three cohorts you're talking about. Who are they?
Well, first of all, they're part of
Are they teachers?
They were teachers. They're people like me, but younger, who taught for a long time, got quite good at what they were. And so when they were, when the state was wanting to hire some good folks who know how to coach teachers to teach better, these people applied for those positions, and the folks we have got those jobs. I've worked with, at first school, I think, I may have told you before, I'm not sure, but it was in an Indian reservation school. And so it was essentially ninety-nine percent Native Americans. The only youngster who was not a Native American was the pastor's boy. And they came in, the same kind of group, it wasn't the same ladies, but the same kind of a group. And they were able to, they were fantastic. They turned the school around. Plus, I obviously had something to do with it. As I may have told you before, we went from about the same situation that we are here, where truly the proficiencies were in the twenty percentile. They were not good at all. And then you're called a priority school, because you're given a priority to be worked with. And within, at that time, they gave you three years only to turn things around. We did it, and it's a serious story. That within three years, the kids were in the sixty percentile in math, reading, and science, all three areas. It was fantastic. But it was a smaller school, too. It was like a hundred kids, K through six. And there we also had, essentially, we had one class for every grade level, kindergarten through sixth grade, but it worked out well. These ladies are doing the same thing. We haven't had quite the same luck. But I think part of it is the, you know, is COVID, you know, it's kind of right in the middle of everything. So that hasn't helped at all.
So now that we're more than a year into this, the COVID thing, are the students doing better? I mean, reading and math-wise, or are they still at the same level?
Well, for sure, there was a slip, you know, because for, well, it's what's it been, about eighteen months, and we're now face-to-face. We're not doing the distance learning. So definitely we passed that situation. But we, as we've talked about before, we know what's gonna happen next month or the month after. Hopefully, we won't go back to that situation. But I think it's fair to say that they're working their way up that hill again to where they ought to be. They're not where they ought to be, and you can see that in some of the scores we talked about. But they'll get there. With the help of the cohorts, and my background, and Tyson gets out and works with the teachers a lot, I've gotta believe that it's gonna be turned around. But it won't all happen.
So I keep asking so many questions.
That's all right.
But the kids that are higher risk, are they gonna get maybe some stuff to do over the holiday weekend? Like maybe a couple of reading assignments, something to keep them from losing what they've learned?
That would be up to the teacher. And oftentimes, with a situation like that, Susan, the teacher is thinking, "We don't wanna have them be feeling as though they're being picked on and having to work."
Fall back in where they were.
Yeah. So they probably would be given some, but not too much, because they're supposed to enjoy that.
Well, yeah. But that summer program we had, did that, I take it, that helped quite a bit? The kids were pushing them up.
Yep, for sure.
So would that be something we would do again next summer?
We absolutely are planning on doing that. We'll see if we can expand it even more, although I don't think that's possible. But we're gonna do as much as we did this last year. I was really, I'm just really proud of the teachers and everyone that came out to work with the kids. Yeah. Sorry, I kind of raced to all that. It didn't mean to. If there are any other questions, be happy to respond to that. Again, the A&amp;I plan is a three-year strategic plan. And this is the first year of that three-year strategic plan. So there's two more of these annual reports, as they're called, that we would be doing. Another one about the same time next year and the next year after that. But also, speaking of strategic plans, I think I've mentioned it before, forgetting these strategic plans, the MSBA provides help with us having a strategic, like it's usually about a five-year. This will be a three-year, a five-year strategic plan. And they bring in the community. They really get involved. I mean, it's, in my experience, I've been done it in two different schools. And the place is packed with people, and there's no bigger schools than ours. And so people have a chance to give their comments about things, and it's all positive. And it's something that we ought to think about, having someone from MSBA come and work with us, doing the same thing. I forget what the cost is. It's, I mean, truly, what comes of it is worth it. I think it's something in the area of three to five thousand dollars. But it goes on for a year. And so they come out, I mean, it's fantastic. So I'll talk about it more, but I wanted to mention that I think that we're now at a point, would have had us do that earlier, but COVID came. And so now that we can be with each other, and in my mind, you have to do that for the strategic plan to really work. I'm gonna bring up a meeting, a board meeting coming up soon, just to get us thinking along that line. And that's a way of getting the community involved, too. It's not just, you know, the board and me and a few teachers or whatever. It's, we want the community to be involved, and they will be, the way it's set up. It's, we want the community to be involved, and they will be, the way it's set up, it works beautifully. So that's something else for us to look forward to. Other, other thoughts? Okay. Well, this is just a hearing. It was posted, but it's not unusual that people don't show up for such things as this. But it's important for us to do. And what's more important is that we, as a school, are going through this process. And we're doing the kinds of things that we ought to be doing for our kids. And that's what this is all about, making sure that we're doing all that we can for the children at our school. So I want to thank, really, thank you a lot for coming out and being here when they didn't have to be. So thank you very much.